Call to order a special meeting for the Normal and Local Liquor Commission for March 20th, 2023. Please call to roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Preston? Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Uh, we have, um, one, one order. Yeah, I'm just making sure that's all we've got.
No.
We don't have approval of minutes, do we? Aha, yes. First order of business is the approval of minutes for the special meeting of February 6, 2023.
Move approval.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments? Hearing none, call to roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston? Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The minutes are approved. Uh, second order of business is approving liquor licenses for the 2023, uh, year. Motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
We have 76, um, um, applications for, uh, licenses. I won't go down, uh, the breakdown of what each one is, but, uh, uh, all are in compliance at this point, I think. So, uh, we're approving, uh, renewal of liquor licenses.
Just one correction, it's 77 instead of 76, just for the record.
You are right. Thank you.
I'll move approval for those 77.
Discussion. Please call to roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Those licenses are approved. Uh, motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Please call to roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord? Mayor Kuss?
Aye. We are adjourned. Call to order a regular meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, March 20th, 2023. Please call to roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have no public comment tonight regarding the agenda. Um, we'll move into the omnibus agenda. Is the audience able to hear me? No. We're gonna wait till my mic gets adjusted here. I think I got it now. Uh, we start with the omnibus agenda items considered, considered routine and will be taken with one vote unless a council member would like to pull on my item for discussion. Mr. Nord?
I'd like to pull items B as in boys, C as in Charles.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Items considered on omnibus tonight are resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorize an extension of a contract with Civic Plus for website services in the amount of $33,406. A resolution authorizing the purchase of eight cardiac monitor defibrillators from Zoll Medical Corporation pursuant to the National Purchasing Partners Public Safety GPO contract, and that is in the amount of $371,256.20. A resolution accepting a proposal from Presidio Networked Solutions Group LLC for the purchase of storage infrastructure for the total amount of $366,485.55. A resolution accepting a proposal from Sentinel Science, I'm sorry, Sentinel Solutions LLC for the purchase of network infrastructure for a total amount of $712,277, including an annual managed services cost of $68,933. Please call to roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Those items are approved. Item B is a report to receive and file town of normal expenditures for payment as of March 15th, 2023. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
On PDF page 16, that's expense report page three, under facilities management, there's an expense for $28,000 and some change for climber demo, is what it says for the description. Is this for the climber at the CDM?
Um, yes, I believe so. I think we, um, my recollection is that we use contractor, um, dumpsters and offered some assistance in that regard. I'm looking for...
Well, it says core construction, so I assume that was the demo part?
Correct.
So my question, is this is under facilities management, but this is for the climber at the CDM? Why isn't this expense listed under the CDM?
Well, it's probably listed under facilities management because facilities coordinated that particular expense and probably has the contract with the vendors. Um, we could certainly move it over to the museum if we so chose, but both are, both of those departments are funded by the general fund.
Okay, but if you look at the expenses, expenses should be grouped with, you know, within the CDM if they're from the CDM. Under CDM expenses, there's also something there for the garbage service, you know, so it kind of disguises whenever you go back and look in history to see how something was doing if the expenses have been disguised elsewhere within the budget.
Sure. Um, just one quick clarification in that regard in terms of the, uh, waste removal services for the museum, the, um, the garbage services, that's in partnership with other, um, businesses on that block of Beaufort.
Sure, but it's still listed under CDM, is my point.
Right, because the museum pays for that in partnership with the, the service that occurs in the dumpsters in the alleyway with their neighbors.
Okay, then in order to get me to a yes for this budget, I move that we move the expense for the climber demo to the CDM expense grouping.
Would you make that a form of an amendment?
If, if I could just jump in, that could just be a journal entry if council wants to see the expense in a different department. Um, the, it's already been paid, so it's just, if you want it recorded somewhere else, we'll just do a journal entry.
Sure, I mean, for the, it's for historical outlook, so the people that follow behind us, they would like to see what the, what it cost, because it was for the CDM, it wasn't for facilities management.
Do we have an, uh, an amendment? Do we have a second to the amendment?
Uh, point of order, is an, is an amendment needed to require a journal entry modification?
No, staff can, yeah, staff can just do that. We can record this as an expense for the museum and just move it as a journal entry, I assume, Mr. Hune. I mean, we can track it as a, if council wants this tracked as a museum expense, we can move it, I guess. Like I said, it's already been paid.
Mr. McCarthy?
It's my understanding that facilities management as a department pays for repairs, maintenance upgrades on all town facilities, not just the CDM. In fact, on that same page, there is, um, fees for fire suppression repairs. Um, so since its inception, the facility management has paid for upkeep, maintenance, care of, improvements on all facilities. So it would seem that taking it out of facilities management would be against the history of the entire unit and its operation style. And so the maintenance and care of facilities is by definition that department's responsibility. So, uh, I would argue against that, but...
So I think the way I'm gonna proceed here is if you, uh, have a comment or want to move that line item, uh, speak up if you, uh, I'm gonna take silence as leave it be. Uh, just a moment, Mr. Nord. Okay, Mr. Nord?
Yeah, I mean, there's accounting folks here, there's accounting folks up here on the, on the DS too. Um, if there was no CDM, this expense would not exist. If we were not replacing the climber, this expense would not exist. You know, this is just, does this matter? You know, in the big picture, it's not gonna adjust the bottom line. This is just in finance, this is how you hide things, and that's what it looks like. It's not being transparent. So...
Nothing's being hidden, Mr. Nord. Uh, please call to roll.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That item is approved. Item C is a resolution reestablishing the Moritz Facade Improvement Grant Program. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Um, so my question, I've got a couple of questions. The first is the money. Is this money coming out of the TIF, the Uptown TIF, or is this coming out of some other bucket?
Um, the, the facade, the Moritz Facade Improvement Program is funded by the general fund, and, uh, I shared that information at our budget work session and also with, um, council in my annual budget highlights memo.
Good, so now the public knows.
Well...
As well.
Right, it hasn't been a secret, I don't think, but...
Okay, then, this has been something that existed, um, years ago, right? The folks that are, that have currently or that have received this grant in the past, are they able to apply for this again?
Sure, I think anyone's eligible to apply. Um, the facade program existed 15-plus years ago. Um, I don't, I don't, in the report, I think it indicates the years that we had the program before. I think certainly anyone could be eligible if they're a property owner. Ms. Davidson's come, coming forward.
Um, yes, just as was the case between 2003 and 2008, it's eligible, folks that are eligible would be property owners or business owners, like tenants.
Okay. Are there businesses that said they can't afford to keep up with the facade that they need taxpayer assistance?
Um, I haven't spoken with anyone recently, but it's pretty common in places with historic building stock, like in the central business district to have more, some unique building needs, and I know the program was very well used years ago. So, um, and there are, if you walked around Uptown, there are improvements that can certainly be made.
Sure. Um, I'm not opposed to the whole thing, it's just, I don't want this to be a revolving door where the only way you can afford to fix your facade in Uptown is if, um, the government gives you another handout. You know, we should offer it once, and then after that, you know, it should be upon yourself to be able to earn enough money to take care of the facilities down here. Um, does any other council member have any thought on that?
Ms. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to make sure that I make this statement tonight. We have sat at this table many a times, and many people have said to us, what are we doing to preserve the historic buildings that are in this community, and what are we doing to ensure that we keep them, um, at a, a level for the future? And I don't want us to get into a moment where we have the opportunity to do it and you tell us not to. Either you want us to do it or you don't. Either we're gonna help preserve the historic buildings or we're not. And I'm okay with preserving what we can, um, as long as they continue to be maintained, because we know as they even age older, it gets more and more expensive to maintain them. Thank you.
Further on this item, Ms. Smith?
I would just note that, uh, the timing of stopping the grants coincided with the financial crisis of 2008. Um, we weathered that and, and here locally in 2014, the town had some setbacks when State Farm announced that they were, um, developing three hubs in some southern cities. But we're in a position now where we're facing a level of growth that is bringing, seeing additional revenues and additional revenue, residents coming to the community. And as, as Ms. Harris commented, buildings age, and it's not a situation where you can do something once and be done with it. So that we're in a position to, to provide an incentive to property owners to maintain a structure that has a distinct character, um, that speaks to the history of the town. I, I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Further, Mr. Nord?
Is there a similar program for folks that are not in Uptown that have got these old buildings?
Well, there is a grant program for designated historic properties in the districts, the historic districts.
Okay, so outside of Uptown, folks have access to something too?
If they're on, in a designated property, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I would add that we've done multiple grants for, uh, uh, strip center remodels, uh, redo of College Hill, shops at College Hills. So to say that we don't do anything outside the Uptown is, is not entirely accurate. Mr. McCarthy?
Let's try that again. Uh, and to add to that, you know, we've done a number of TIFs outside the Uptown area that's helped benefit property owners, uh, invest in their properties and, and not only rehabilitate, but grow new properties, uh, as well. Um, so in short, the town of Normal has historically done a number of things to try to help support small and local businesses, um, uh, thrive, uh, in a number of ways, before the pandemic, during the pandemic, and now after the pandemic. Um, I see this as a support of small businesses, particularly for those with historic properties where it does take more money and more effort to preserve them. Uh, and I think we all agree that a, a, uh, updated central business district is attractive and, and helps, uh, business thrive. And, uh, as such, I'm supportive. I think it's just a good investment, uh, in our community and, and supporting our local businesses. Thanks.
Please call to roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That item is approved. We have one item of general orders tonight, that's an ordinance eliminating the vehicle use tax within Normal and approval of, uh, applicable, uh, budget adjustments.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead. I don't have much more to add than what's in the council report, so...
Um, I'm, I'm pleased to see this agenda item move forward after I first brought it, uh, as a suggestion following our preliminary discussion of the, the budget. In my review of what was included in the budget, this sale, this vehicle use tax is a minor component of revenue stream for the town of Normal, and, um, it is something that represents more a burden to collect it, because if the local car dealers don't process it at the time of sale, the onus falls on town staff to administrate the, the collection, whether someone lives in Normal or lives in Bloomington, and then they turn the proceeds over to Bloomington for their residents. It's not assessed against, um, where you buy the car, it is determined by the residency of the person who purchases either a car, boat, or trailer, and then needs to have a, a transfer of a title on that property. Um, in the budget forecast, it's in the neighborhood of half a million in the, the next five years of the forecast, and the budget has included contingency of 750 million. So if we were to eliminate this, we're cutting into that contingency that allows us to make this elimination of this tax without really endangering other programs of the town. And in speaking with some citizens about this who are nervous about can we really afford to do this long-term, if you look at the sales tax, um, which in the budget, local sales tax and state, state sales tax represent 13% locally, 9% from the state of our total revenue stream, and we've come a long way as a community in how much we're collecting in sales taxes. In 2015 to 2016, it was, the local sales tax alone was 10 and a half million. It's been growing steadily since then, till it, last year, our local sales tax was, was double that at 20.3 million. And now we have forecasted some very conservative increases of around 1% increases in those sales taxes. So it, to my mind, it, this is an opportunity for us to cut a tax that's not really a major component of our revenue stream, provide some relief to citizens who are making a car purchase or a recreational boat or trailer. And, and I think this is a win-win for us, and I thank the staff for doing the, the research on calculating the with and without to ascertain whether or not, um, our budget could support it, and I thank them for that, and I thank the council members who've reached out to me with their vote of, of approval for pursuing this.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, it isn't often that your local government, uh, actually eliminates a certain kind of tax, and, uh, that coming to us tonight, I think, uh, shows a number of things. Uh, one, um, I think it shows, uh, good leadership by, um, Ms. Smith and the rest of council for, um, talking about, uh, this and bringing up the idea. Uh, two, thank you to staff, um, for looking into it and ultimately recommending it, um, for approval tonight. Um, and, uh, and three, it, you know, says, uh, it shows just further, uh, it further exemplifies the good financial situation that the town of Normal is in, uh, to be able to do something like this. Uh, taxes quite often are not popular in general. Um, this is one, uh, that is especially unpopular, uh, with a lot of residents, I think, in part, um, because of the surprise factor of people not realizing or not anticipating it, and then especially if it's, uh, after the sale, getting, uh, communication from the town suggesting that they then owe for it, uh, is not often a welcomed, uh, communication. So I'm glad to see that we're eliminating a tax tonight. Uh, I'm certainly in favor of it, and I think all the way around, it's a good decision.
Further on this item, Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, also want to, uh, thank and congratulate staff for doing the legwork on this and recommending, uh, that we consider it. Um, and, uh, Ms. Smith for your, uh, uh, role in, uh, bringing it up to the council to have the discussion. Um, in 2021, I paid this on a new vehicle purchase. Uh, and so, uh, wish this was eliminated a little earlier, but it is what it is, and I wrote a check to the town of Normal. Uh, but, uh, um, a couple of things is, is I'm, you know, at the outset, I'm supportive of this. Uh, I agree. Uh, it's, it's rare, uh, that we are in position to, um, lessen, uh, taxes and fees. Um, and so when we can, we do. Um, I do caution when times are, are tighter, uh, and certainly they will at some point, uh, tighten, um, that, uh, there will be a consequence to this vote at then. Uh, I do feel compelled, uh, to share, uh, to residents, uh, in the town of Normal reached out to oppose this, uh, tax reduction, uh, for the very reasons of, uh, uh, that when budgets are tight, we're likely to need it, um, even though right now it, uh, it seems like a good idea. Uh, we had a good fruitful discussion. They understand why we're trying to do this to give relief, uh, uh, but they were still opposed. So I was a little surprised by that, but, uh, but, uh, at any rate, I'm supportive and, uh, appreciate everybody's work on it.
Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you. Um, I have a question, uh, about, um, how we've, uh, communicated to Bloomington about this and, and the, um, is there going to be any, um, sort of complications, I guess, by, uh, us not collecting it, but I presume they still are collecting it? Um, can you expand on that a little bit?
Sure. Uh, based on, based on my communications with Bloomington City Manager, Deputy City Manager, um, and the finance directors have communicated as well, um, Bloomington is comfortable with our transition plan.
Okay.
In terms of the town collecting it for a while and then transitioning, um, by fall to Bloomington so they can do their own collection for their residents. Um, I do not know if Bloomington has intentions to make a change or not, but they are comfortable with this transition plan.
So we had always done it all?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And just because that's the way it had been done forever and ever?
Uh, the town collects, has collected the vehicle use tax on behalf of both municipalities and then remits Bloomington's share to them. Bloomington, uh, collects the food and beverage tax for both municipalities and, and remits Normal's share to us.
Sort of that division of duties, okay. All right, thank you. And, uh, you know, like my colleagues have been saying, this is a, a great opportunity to take advantage of. So thank you.
Further on the item, Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Um, I'm curious, has a business come forward asking for this tax to be removed?
A business? I don't believe so.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I'm, I'm not aware of that, but I also don't receive much of the communication. The collection is done by the finance department.
Sure. I, I will say that I have been asked by it not recently, and that's anecdotal, but I have been asked by a business.
Yeah, 'cause I remember, gosh, this was a few years ago, a major business came into town and they were talking about the, uh, ownership model for vehicles, how they viewed it was going to change, where people wouldn't own vehicles, they would just rent them as needed. So if that company were to title a whole bunch of vehicles here to, um, make that, I guess rental model work, this would be a great incentive for them to do that here. Now, on the flip side, I see that as great because that then makes them more competitive elsewhere, and we'll still get the tax dollars coming in from just increased normal sales tax. But, um, I just wanted to throw that out there. I just want to make sure this wasn't like a, kind of an incentive in disguise. But, um, what I don't like about this is we talk about how we want to make our community more affordable. We want to help the people that are truly in need. Well, this tax, even though it's only $500,000, this is a tax for people that can afford to buy vehicles, you know, and the more often you buy vehicles, the more expensive the vehicle, the more it helps you. So this is more of a tax benefit that helps the rich, not the people that really struggle. You know, I would have liked, I'm, I'm never gonna vote, um, to keep a tax, you know, I would always vote to remove a tax, but I would have liked to have seen a tax that helps pretty much everyone in the community, especially those that are truly in need, you know, maybe like a utility tax, lowering that, or something that more people will be able to use, because just as Mr. McCarthy mentioned, it was two years ago when he last used this tax. You know, some people keep their vehicles five years, maybe even longer, you know, so they're only gonna see a benefit once every five years. Um, so I'm supportive of the effort, but in light of, uh, trying to help those in need, let's, if we're gonna try and reduce taxes on people, let's do one that's, kind of helps the people that truly need it, because folks that afford vehicles every year, I mean, I doubt they're struggling anyway. Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor.
Everybody wants a bite of this apple.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to...
First, I would like to thank staff for doing diligently the the work to gather up a lot of information for this. I also want to call to the fact of how what it takes when there's a thought process by a council member and to rally up the remaining council members to support. And it's it's having communication, direct communication and utilizing the streams of of communication we have to work together as a cohesive unit to make this happen. And that's what we're seeing tonight. But I do want to share that I've actually been approached about this not by a business and not by somebody who's rich by no means, who purchased a vehicle and received the bill for the use tax after receiving the loan, and it was like $5,000, and they don't have it. And then they get threatening letters about that we can take them to court or something about court something or whatever when it comes to not filing that use tax dollar amount. So I have I am very familiar about the pains that come with this and for those who do not have. And it's not always easy because it's not easy for them to just come up with $5,000 at the request of from the purchase of a vehicle. So I want that to be on record and to be noted. It's not about just a business that has had these issues. There are individuals who made purchases, and a lot of times it is the smaller dealerships, one, who charge you more for a vehicle than it's really even worth in the first place. And secondly, they don't get the same kind of loan deals. So whatever it is at the time, it's not always including the tax. It's not like how some people who work at State Farm could probably go back to the to the credit union at State Farm and say, hey, we forgot this tax, and can you add it into my loan? These are people who are barely getting a loan because their credit is is low, and it's not because they they just messed it up. Sometimes it is having very bad financial situations in their life, like losing a job and being homeless for months on end, and now finally having the opportunity to do something with themselves. So before we throw labels on things, let's be very clear and very honest about them all. Thank you.
Ms. Lorenz.
So thank you, Ms. Harris, for sharing that that story. The I my comment is along the same line in that in my day job, I work in the social service sector, and I personally speak to many people in this community who need to buy a car. It's oftentimes their biggest expense purchase that they do. And yes, this bill is not something that they can just absorb without a shockwave. So I shuddered at the comment earlier that paints this as a rich person's tax because the person that has the fewest options but still needs to get to work could be really, really adversely affected by this. And I think we should keep that fuller perspective of who the car purchasing residents are. And and I think they cover a whole span of of income levels. So I just wanted to clarify that, and it was kind of a nice tag on to. Now, the $5,000, I my colleague over here is doing some math, and I think he's going to light into that, but it might have been maybe that person felt like it was $5,000 to them. Yeah, yeah. So anyway, that's that's my comment. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't know how we defined rich. I'm not sure I fit into that category. And to be clear, it's my first vehicle in 20 years, so we all know how frugal I am about these type of purchases. But I I thank my both of my colleagues for speaking to this. I also want to highlight that there's actually many, many people in this community that we wouldn't classify as rich that are severely vehicle dependent. And so all you have to think about is restaurant workers. All you have to think about is first year, second year teachers whose incomes are very low but are frequently buying their first vehicle. And this absolutely helps a whole, whole segment of our working population that does not make high salaries, does not make high incomes. And so, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, $500 makes a difference for those folks on top of financing the vehicle. So certainly, this helps a much, much wider swath of individuals in our community than it's been portrayed here tonight. Thanks.
Mr. Nord.
Just so the public's aware, some quick math, $5,000, what this saves you? $35.50 on a $5,000 vehicle. In our council write-up, a $25,000 vehicle, $187. Now, to get to a $5,000 vehicle or $5,000 tax, these are the very people that I would not support eliminating this tax for because that's a $666,000 vehicle if you get a $5,000 tax bill for just this one tax. So, you know, again, I'm glad we're eliminating it, but let's not kind of excite ourselves too much over what it is. And anyway, I'm still supportive of it.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That ordinance is approved. We have no new business tonight, but we do have six public speakers tonight at the end of the meeting. And so we will start start that process with Ron Olmer. Again, I would ask that you state your name for the record, and you have three minutes of public comment.
My name is Ronald Olmer. I'm a Normal taxpayer. The town of Normal has operated under the rules of a village for approximately 50 years. Normal has elected their council members at large during this entire period. When the citizens expressed their desire to vote on the question to continue to elect council members at large or to elect them by district, Normal stated this citizens do not have the right to petition Normal's government to have this question placed on the ballot because Normal is incorporated as a town, not a village. Under the Illinois state statute, citizens of villages may petition the government to place this question on the ballot. However, citizens of the of towns cannot. Thereby, Normal rules against the will of its citizens. Councilmember McCarthy represented Normal's government in Springfield testifying to keep the question off the ballot. Mr. McCarthy is elected to represent the citizens of Normal, not the government of Normal. When a municipality is incorporated as a town, state statute requires the following of elected offices, town clerk, town collector, supervisor, and town assessor, in addition to town president and trustees. However, Normal's used its attorneys and hired outside attorneys at taxpayer expense to block these elective positions from the ballot. Now Normal has proposed amending state statutes to apply to Normal, stating that the town clerk remain a hired position and collector, supervisor, assessor, all be hired positions, thereby violating current state statute that requires these positions to be elected for a municipality that is incorporated as a town. Similarly, over several years ago, 1,000, over 1,000 electronic citizen signatures were collected in days in favor of preserving the art well to the prospective Trail East development at a cost of 100,000. The town opposed the art saving the art well, fighting the will of the citizens in court. The court procedure contributed to the trail developer, Trail East developers withdrawing their proposal. Normal citizens need to elect council members that represent the citizens.
I don't normally do this, but Mr. Day, I don't want to leave that hanging. A town can petition to have districts, correct?
Under Article 3.1, there are no statutory provisions for that, for a town to go into. The issue, actual legal issue is significantly more complicated than that. The objection petition was filed based on the fact that we were a town, not a village, and that was because of the narrow focus of how you have to rule on an objection petition. That is what went up to the electoral board and then ultimately to the court. And while that was correct, that wasn't really not the deciding factor, even if the town were a village, the statute that the referendum was placed on just still wouldn't have applied to us for a number of reasons. One, because we're a special charter community, and that statute wouldn't have applied to a special charter community, and also because we operate under Article 5, not Article 3.1 form of government. So it's a significantly more complex legal argument than what we heard.
Thank you. I just I normally don't do that, but I wanted to be clear on what what we were talking about here tonight. Our next speaker is Vicki Rowe.
Hi, I'm Vicki Rowe, spelled V-I-C-K-I-R-O-W-E. I'm here to bring attention to the Unit 5 school district electionaring, which has been happening in Unit 5 school buildings and on school grounds, which are public grounds. And according to Illinois and Illinois Constitution, this is illegal activity happening on school grounds. It's also against Unit 5 school district's own policy of no electionaring on school buildings and school grounds. It's also a conflict of interest. It's unethical. It's abuse of power and leadership by Unit 5. Unit 5 needs to be held accountable for these illegal actions. So I'm asking each of you, what are you going to do about this issue? What is the Normal Police Department going to do about this issue? There were previous complaints filed before mine. I filed mine on March 16th, but there were several complaints filed before mine on March 16th. What I witnessed on March 16th at Northwest High School at the school district unit concert should have never happened because complaints were always already filed before mine. This was a concert for the kids and the students. The whole point of not having electionaring on school campuses is so that you can go enjoy school events and the concert for the kids, not to see campaign literature and materials. So when I went to the concert on March 16th, there were campaign materials on the table right by the door to enter the gym for the concert. You couldn't miss it because you had to go past this table of campaign literature. This is against Unit 5 policy and also illegal. The table had campaign materials for four school board candidates, but there are nine candidates in the school board Unit 5 election. Where were the other five? Well, first of all, it's illegal. You're not supposed to have it, but I guess if you're going to, you should include all nine candidates. It's unfair and unacceptable that the other five candidates didn't get to have their campaign materials out. And this concert was filled to capacity in the Normal West High School gym. The bleachers were filled, there were chairs on the floor, it was standing room only. Also, on this table was the Unit 5 tax referendum. It just represented one side and not both sides. So again, this is all illegal and against Unit 5's own policy that you can't do these things. So I've also had many parents, students, and teachers tell me that this has been happening throughout the last couple of months at school events and concerts, and also campaign materials have been placed in teachers' mailboxes. So I'm asking you, the council, what are you going to do to investigate this, get the information, check it out, and hold Unit 5 accountable for electionaring, which is an illegal activity? Example, if Unit 5 students are caught cheating on tests or schoolwork, they're held accountable, and there's consequences. Also, if you're an athlete on a sports team and you're caught cheating, you're going to have consequences, and you need to be held accountable. I'm asking the same thing that Unit 5 be held accountable for their campaigning on school grounds, allowing it, promoting it, letting it happen for the last couple of months. I look forward to hearing from each of you on what your next steps on this issue is going to be. Our students deserve better, our community deserves better, and our county deserves better. Unit 5 needs to be held high standards, values, and integrity because they're teaching our kids, and it's about education. They broke their own policies. I encourage the public to bring other evidence of electionaring forward to the Normal Police Department and the complaints. But like I said, there's already been many complaints already filed. I know parents have talked to the Unit 5 admin and school board and principals.
Ms. Rowe, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. You've exceeded your time limit.
Okay, gotcha. So I'm just asking you, what are you going to do about this? And I thank you.
Next speaker is Mary Carlisle.
My name is Mary Carlisle. The taxpayers of Normal have serious concerns about the way tax dollars are spent or more accurately misspent. 25 years ago, the EPA issued guidance regarding the necessary separation of storm and sanitary sewer systems. Municipalities were asked to voluntarily bring these systems into compliance by separating them so that residents would not have their basements flooded with raw sewage and storm water during excessive rain events. Unfortunately, the people's representatives in Normal have neglected their fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers over the last several decades. Instead of investing in replacing and upgrading a failed, several years old storm and sanitary sewer system, they have chosen instead to spend money where it is neither needed nor wanted. The citizens of Normal don't need all the fancy plans for new buildings in Normal, yet the council representatives vote for these things anyway. We are now stuck with the high price of owning and maintaining new buildings while our tax dollars should have been properly allocated to replacing this old storm and sanitary sewer system. While we do not live next door to one another, I consider the residents who suffer with this ongoing issue to be my neighbors. Every time it rains, they have to deal with the aftermath of the willful negligence of Normal representatives. Once again, we have future projects on the table which are not as important as properly fixing and replacing the broken storm and sanitary sewer systems. We do not need to be spending taxpayer dollars on a new library or other new buildings to the south and east when we have a broken, failed storm and sanitary sewer system that is well past needing to be replaced. The storm sewer and sanitary sewer system that our neighbors are forced to live with is inequitable, as well as an extremely serious health hazard. Who can argue that having raw sewage come up in your basement is not healthy? Going forward, please take the backbone and leadership to demonstrate your fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Normal. Have the decency as people to demonstrate your concern for your neighbors who have to live with a failed storm and sanitary sewer system. Please finally take care of this for all the Normal residents on the west side, pardon me. Thank you.
Next speaker is Chad Burke. Did I get that right? Thank you.
And my name is Chad Burke, spelled C-H-A-D, B as in boy, E-R-C-K. And I'm going to try to read from my prepared comments to stay in the time limit. These comments are in regard to the Sharon Chung amendments that are being prepared. The judge already ruled that the state law does not apply to Normal because Normal is a home rule town. So it makes no sense to spend our tax dollars to change a law that doesn't even apply to Normal. Making any legislative action moot and purely an act of arrogant misuse of the law. The only way this makes sense is if the town attorney believes the judge was wrong and his decisions would not survive an appeal. This would also mean the town really believes the lull saying these three positions should be elected by the voters. It would also mean town staff are worried they may not be able to convince, coerce another judge to side with the town staff again. Now the town staff are using our tax dollars to ensure the voters in Normal get to choose who fills the same elected offices that all other incorporated towns in Illinois of over 25,000 people get to enjoy. Using taxpayer dollars and resources to make this the official policy of the town with no elected council vote is purely, and I have to stress that, is purely taxation without any representation. Simple. There is absolutely no citizen opinion or input at all. Some may even call this decision-making. Some may even call this decision-making that is happening, this process, a form of a tyrannical government taking place. What you are doing with the help of Representative Chung is simply a horrible process. It gives voters no voice in this government at the city level, the closest government we have to our homes. It appears as though Normal's staff know that they are breaking the law and instead of following it, they're attempting to alter it or adjust it, which you have the legal processes to do beforehand if you wanted to make that done. Instead, you're altering after the fact. This is all about the staff doing whatever it takes to retain the position and powers you have, taking them out of the hands of future elected officials that we could vote in, a form of tyranny-mandering. What you have done is not only the, what you have done are not the actions of an open, honest, and transparent government.
Mr. Burke, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your, over your time limit.
Your actions are not an active attack against, your actions are an active attack against Lincoln's famous words, and this is his home state. A government of the people, for the people, and by the people. This administration has been caught deceitfully moving legislation forward to ensue Lincoln's words never apply to residents of Normal. I'm almost done, sir.
Mr. Burke, I have to cut you off. You've gone a full minute over.
The sunshine rules are three more minutes. Just let me finish this paragraph and I, you and I.
No, Mr. Burke.
The open, honest, and transparent thing to do is to demand Representative Chung withdraw her bill. If it ever is to go forward again, then you have the elected council vote on if this is how they want to spend our tax dollars. That way, the public knows who exactly to hold accountable. Anything less proves what so many residents believe, which is Normal is tyrannical government under the rule of whomever is the town manager. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kathy Syracuse.
Kathy Syracuse, S-I-R-A-C-U-S-E. I'll keep it short and sweet. Corruption, the impairment of integrity, virtue, and moral judgment, tyranny, cruel and oppressive government on, by the leaders. And we, the people, find this government guilty of corruption and tyranny. I've listened to, I've been a part of this community. I was part of the One Normal Clause that keep the alcohol out of it. I was part of the districting of Normal. I've been a part of all the issues that go to the judges for decisions. And time and again, it just seems that it rolls right off your backs and really, you all ought to be ashamed of the way you perform. And if it was possible, we should give pink slips to most of you. But shame is only part of people that have a conscience, and I don't think there's much of that here. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Carl Seela.
I'm Carl Seela, and I'm a Normal guy. I know I haven't been here in a while, there's been health issues in my family, so I'd like to wish all of you a Happy St. Patrick's Day, Happy Valentine's Day, Happy New Year's Day. And although I'm pretty sure most of us get a brand-new car for Christmas, I hope you had a Merry Christmas anyway. As you can tell, there are a lot of people here wanting to express their sentiments before the election. I was not planning on speaking, but not everybody's willing to come forward and speak, and so I was asked to read this. Rather than deal with traffic issues of Uptown and the train tracks, town decided to spend 30-plus million dollars on a pedestrian-only underpass which includes a nice park where town employees can eat lunch while taxpayers sit in traffic. Townspeople have complained for years about the decline of quality of our roads, but the town instead put money towards pet projects and then paid tens of thousands of dollars to a consultant to tell them, yes, we have declining roads. And even now, we're only spending enough to maintain our current level so that you have enough money for the underpass park. The town put millions of dollars into the pocket of a real estate developer to get portos here, but a restaurant is not an economic engine and therefore should not be getting significant incentives. The town spent almost $250,000 on utility work for the benefit of a private business, claiming it was a wise beautification investment to improve commerce. We were unaware that the alleys of Uptown had a lot of commerce going on, and if they did, that type of commerce spent would be sales taxes. The town has shifted our water department to an enterprise fund, which means water expenses should be paid by water income. That in and of itself, I think, is actually a good thing. However, not only have you not reduced other taxes by amount that water rates have increased, as you should, water funds have been diverted to pay for snowplowing, among other things. The town has repeatedly used public resources to benefit private concerns that you support, paying to run internet due to spill, putting a private internet provider's employees on town payroll so they can enjoy town benefits and pensions, providing accounting services to a group the mayor is a member of. And while it is claimed that most of these costs were reimbursed, we're, townspeople have never been given improper accounting to verify those costs. The council approved the purchase of a luxury car explicitly for inclusion in the general motor pool, but it's consistently in the mayor's driveway with expensive private vehicle plates to help disguise the fact that taxpayers are paying for his new suite ride. The town essentially gave away the land under One Uptown Circle, selling it for literally $1, then agreed to severely overpay to rent town offices there. This is a subsidy for both the forever-empty first floor and the upstairs luxury apartments where the town manager's mother-in-law lives. The town spends a lot of money on clearly nice-to-have items like training high school political activists, more and better bike paths, free charging for electrical vehicles, and other items while ignoring true needs, as one of the other speaker mentioned, citizens that have raw sewage in their basements during particularly heavy rains. And meanwhile, our police and fire pensions are horribly underfunded. This is far from a comprehensive list, but I wanted to keep it on one page in under three minutes. We're aware that not every council member here voted for every one of these ethically questionable icons, but the lack of calling them out, or the lack of calling out this stream of, let's be generous and only call it mismanagement, shows implicit approval that can't hide behind a occasional token no vote. Corruption should not be the norm in Normal. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment tonight. Before adjourning, are there concerns or comments? Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to highlight that upcoming is a very holy time of year. Ramadan, the Feast of Ramadan starts, I think it's this Wednesday, so our Muslim friends will be fasting between the hours of sunrise and sunset, followed shortly by Holy Week in many Christian religions, and Passover is close as well. So I encourage any of you with any of those practices to have an opportunity to, thankfully in this country, worship as you choose and be mindful and gracious to your neighbors as they honor their religious beliefs. Thank you.
Other comments or concerns? Mr. Nord?
So a couple of things. Through the speaker that talked about the police investigation, a lot of folks have reached out to me, asking me similar questions, you know, what is the town doing, things like that? And you asked what the council is going to do. You know, me personally, what I have done is I have reached out and shared your questions with the police chief. What I've been met with, I cannot help you any further. I've been met with, if I continue to get involved in this, I'm looking at a lawsuit from the town. So that is where I have to stop on this, and if anybody wants to see the letter, I'm sure Mr. Day can share it, or I can share it if you ask me. So I apologize. You know, you elect people to be your representatives, and as Ms. Lorenz puts in some of her literature, to be your liaison in the city hall.
Mr. Nord, you're taking a very fine line on politicking from the table.
Oh, I cannot be your liaison. The next issue is this amendment that has moved forward at apparently the request of the town in Normal because some of the witness slips say that these folks are coming and speaking on behalf of the town in Normal. So that makes this an official town action. There was no vote on that. Just want to read, there's this ICMA Code of Ethics, which taxpayers pay for our town managers to be a part of. Some of the tenants in there, one, serve the best interests of the people, and it says, especially if specific groups may be disproportionately helped or harmed. Well, you know, there's a large group of people that were involved in these districting questions in these lawsuits, and you know, there was no official county act, there was no official town action for the public to even know that this was going to happen. Another tenant is that members, beginning town managers, should inform the appropriately elected or appointed officials of a decision's anticipated effects on community members. Well, the thousands of people that signed petitions to try and make these changes here over the past year, you know, you were not informed. Another one is that a manager should keep the community informed on local government affairs. Encourage and facilitate active engagement and constructive communication between community members and all local government officials. So again, you know, I cannot represent you on things because I've been told if I do, I'm going to be meddling in things that I shouldn't be when I'm just kind of being the messenger, which is what an elected representative is supposed to do. I know that this is not a time that town staff will communicate with us, but you know, there was some pretty big political drama and theater that happened a while ago whenever the folks turned in petitions for these offices. And there was a town staff member that came up and said, you know, how horrible it was that I sent an email basically saying, hey, here's the state law that says these folks should be able to have their petitions posted online that they applied for these, or that they are running for these offices. And I find it interesting that the, that the state statute that I cited stated, in every incorporated town with a population of 25,000, yada, 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 these people should be, shall be elected. And that is the very statute that now the town is going to change. And this was after the town took the decision out of the elected official's hands at the Electoral Board and hired attorneys to make the decision outside of any elected oversight. You know, and that decision came back that, hey, town's a home rule municipality. Well, in these changes that are going forward, nowhere did I see in there that they are making changes to add that home rule has anything to do with this. So I am very, very concerned as to how this has gone forward under the town's official stamp, when no elected official up here has taken an official vote, and the public who is really harmed by this, who do you hold accountable? Honestly, who? Can you point a finger at any person? Because the elected folks have never voted on this. I don't know where we go from here, but I just find it very, very deceitful and, you know, just, I'm very disappointed.
Further concerns or comments? Motion for adjournment?
There was quite a lot of inaccuracies just shared. Do we want to have the city attorney kind of actually weigh in on the actual legal interpretations? Or is this not the appropriate venue to do a very fine line of electioneering? On one hand, we don't like it, but when it's done at the table, it's okay, apparently? I don't know. Is this appropriate?
I guess I'm going to look at the mayor. There, you know, the fraction of the information just stated was accurate, but a lot of inaccurate statements were made, and I don't even know where we would start. So I'm going to look at the mayor and other council members to suggest.
Mr. McCarthy?
There's a lot. I won't speak to it all, but just, just to be clear, the Illinois General Assembly is an elected body. We all voted for our representatives. Theoretically, if you didn't vote, you didn't have a chance. If you did vote, you had a chance. Down in Springfield, last week at the end of the legislative, coming to the end of legislation, Legislative Bill Week, there was over 1,000 bills being moved through committee in two days. A thousand bills. And many, many more that go through the State General Assembly every year, and this council never votes on any one of those things, ever. That's because the Illinois General Assembly does. The town of Normal Council does not vote of whether or not the Illinois General Assembly should take up legislation. That's the purview of the representatives that were elected to the Illinois General Assembly. We don't have a role in that. Thanks.
Brian?
Brian's probably prepared with a statement.
I think, let's go for some accuracy here.
That might be asking.
Whether we like it or not. In terms of, first, I want to talk about the legislation that has come up tonight. There was a court case that went up. A judge decided that a certain statute did not apply to the town and that it, and a different statute did. That legislation merely codifies what the judge has said. There was some implications here about, well, we wouldn't stand up on appeal or some other nonsense like that. We've waited for the appeal process to pass. That decision is now unappealable. Specifically, the General Assembly wanted to wait for the appeal decision to pass just to make sure that there wasn't an appeal that was going to affect that. This merely codifies what the judge says, what is existing law at this point. It doesn't change anything, not one iota, from what we came out of after that court case. In terms of the electioneering stuff, I, that's just, people will be able to read that information for themselves. I'm not going to wade into that mess. I don't think we have enough time to be here till midnight tonight, but as far as the legislation goes, we're codifying it so that 10 years from now, when somebody stumbles on that same statute, they don't have to go back and find a court transcript, an unpublished court transcript, to find out what the state of the law actually is. We're not changing any existing law at all. The law is what it came out of, what came out of that court decision, and that is all that was being codified in the General Assembly, just to avoid having to, somebody else go through this in the future because we don't have a court, published court opinion that they can look back to. I think that's all, unless anybody has any questions on it. Questions from Mr. Day or things you'd like to have explained this morning? Mr. Nord, go this way. Mr. Nord?
If this didn't apply to the town of Normal, then why is this going forward at the town of Normal taxpayer expense?
What do you mean this? What do you mean this?
If this law that's being changed, 'cause it is being-
You're talking about Section 3.12595?
Yeah, I mean, the amendments, it's being changed. You've got words that are being stricken and words that are being added. I mean, that's the definition of change in my book. I don't know how anybody else defines change, but it is changing.
There was confusion, Mr. Nord, as to which law applied to which. A judge made a decision as to how that law applies, and that codifies what the judge said which laws apply to the town and which do not.
And if it doesn't apply to the town of Normal, why are town of Normal taxpayer dollars being spent pushing legislation forward that we have no standing for it to even apply to us?
Well, we're trying to, like I said, we're trying to avoid future confusion because if that doesn't change, then ten years from now, somebody's gonna come in and say, hey, we should elect a supervisor, which by the way, doesn't exist in Illinois municipal law. It's a township office, which we couldn't do here. But somebody comes in and we get more petitions filed and another court case comes up, and the town of Normal spends however much money it has to spend to defend a case to elect officers that have no function in town government, all because there's a court transcript somewhere, ten years ago, that nobody remembers. Why not fix the statute to comply with what the law is rather than leave it ambiguous?
Because laws are open to interpretation, just like the US Constitution.
But it's not. We had a judge that said this is what the law is. It's not open to interpretation.
Well, then, it should not have gone forward without an elected vote that this was gonna be the official-
Point of order. We're having an argument now instead of a question session. This time is not for argument.
Well, then I move that this be postponed and a discussion be scheduled, a council discussion.
A motion is not appropriate tonight. You could ask to have that put on-
Well, in the future, then I would like to see it so that way it's transparent. But pull it back and put it on hold until the public has a chance to weigh in. And council?
Could I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. We are adjourned.